Ladies and gentlemen, members of City Council, please attend the call meeting of the City Council to be held in the sixth floor conference room, 801 Crawford Street, 6:00 PM, Monday, September 9th, 2013, for the purpose of a public work session. In addition, you may consider a motion to go into closed meeting by order of the mayor. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Meeks?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Simmons?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Mayor Wright. Ms. DeRoe?
Thank you. We have one item on the agenda tonight, and we'll be speaking from two documents. The document, which is the reference book that you got prior to the weekend, and then the PowerPoint.
An excellent, excellent reference, by the way.
Well, thank you. Thank you so much.
Really nice.
Hard work on the part of the whole team, and I point over there, the team is behind you, too. We're close to receiving bids. The bids will come in on the 17th of September, and I thought it would be really important to talk about this in the context of what BHS is in our community. And so we'd start with where it's located today. Can we?
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry. All right, and Brandon, would you come up to... What we've done is taken the site at the existing building, which is the Professional Building, which was now 85 years old, was built in the late 20s, and it's, of course, located at the intersection of High and Washington Street. And we drew a thousand-foot circle using that as the center to develop the neighborhood in which the current Behavioral Healthcare Department exists. And it exists very much in a neighborhood. In fact, you'll find that it's more than five times as many people live in this neighborhood as in the proposed location. It's a neighborhood that's populated with churches. It's a neighborhood that's populated with new businesses, new restaurants. In fact, think about the fact that Menino's opened since BHS, well, recently, in the last year or so. It's a neighborhood that's populated with both schools and former schools. Only 410 feet north of this building stood for decades, Portsmouth Catholic School. Right behind this building, right here, is an early learning center, and we'll show you that. So it's a population, it's a neighborhood, that has a micro-neighborhood right next door. Item number three is the Old YMCA, and that is very much a neighborhood in the sense that it's an apartment building. Across the street from that, again, not too far, is the Old Navy Y Apartments, Malvern Hills. We'll go through all this. Want you... Anything else you want to pick up on that?
Just in that thousand feet, it's a pretty densely urban-developed area of real estate. There's almost 1,000 people that live in that thousand-foot radius.
And I mentioned one new restaurant. There's another new restaurant here, which is Artisans Bakery, which lies only two blocks to the south, and then across from that is this very nice neighborhood over here, which is Old Town South. And we'll give you a flavor of how these things look. This is the Early Learning Center, which is located right behind the Professional Building. And if you turn around this corner, this is King Street, you'll see its playground, and that's the playground for the Early Learning Center. It's geared to young folks. Here's the church that's located right across the street. This is the Lutheran Church. This is St. Mark's Church, coming down one block, and you'll notice right behind St. Mark's is their Empowerment Center. All right, this is standing right at the corner, right outside the building, the Professional Building, and looking north beyond St. Paul's. Now, I want you to look right there. That is the Old Town sign. That is the site of the former Portsmouth Catholic High School. And we have one of their graduates. James, would you come forward, please? James?
That's right.
No, no, come on up. The reason why he did so good at UVA.
Yeah.
And were you aware, as this sounds like a talk show, of this department being located in this building when you were in high school?
No, I didn't know until I was in my 20s.
All right. That school closed in 1992. This is taking a... stepping out from that sign.
Good reversal, James.
You can excuse the witness.
This is stepping out from where that sign is and looking back towards the Professional Building, which is right here.
On the corner.
Okay, 410 feet. This is Artisans Bakery, a new restaurant, and then residential. And we're going to jump across the street and look at the houses across from Artisans Bakery, Old Town South, and there's a court and more houses like this behind it. This is a mere two blocks from the Professional Building. Here's the Professional Building in its relationship to St. Paul's Catholic Church. Court Street Academy, grades K through... K-3 through... Grade 8 is within that thousand-foot neighborhood. And, of course, it has school buses, and if you go back, get back a little ways, this is a playground, and we have a shot, but we didn't include it because we don't want anybody to be identified in these photographs, but this is... These are children playing on the playground at Court Street Academy. These shots were done today. This is the going north on Washington, the Old Town Neighborhood. This is not quite to London Boulevard. This is the first block beyond Queen Street. Now, this is the back of the Old YMCA building. You're standing on King Street, and this is an apartment complex that has 31 units. Doug, what's the distance between these two buildings? Would you say?
About 10 feet.
About 10 feet separates a residential structure from the Professional Building. This going across the street is the old St. Joseph's Academy or the Old Navy Y. It's apartments, it's got 20 units. And then if you look east, this is Malvern Hills Apartments with 55 units. So it's a very high concentration of residential, single-family, detached, multi-family, all ages, from young to old, living very, very close to the Professional Building. Now, what I'd like to do is tell you what the professional service is, and think of this as a health delivery system, because that's what it is. And I'm going to ask Gracie...
Yeah?
Yeah. ...and Brandon to talk about the services and programs that BHS offers.
BHS is an integrated approach to treatment. One of the things that we do is that there's an entry point into all those who are receiving services with DBHS. They start by entering intake, which is right on Washington Street. Just a clinical assessment is done. It is called a bio-psychosocial assessment. The reason that it's so in-depth is because we have to get history that predates those persons who are coming into treatment. We have to know about their childhood. We need to know about their families, any social support systems that they may have that may contribute to the problems that they're presenting with. Once a clinical and very in-depth assessment is done, a preliminary diagnosis is given to those persons who are seeking services. A lot of times, these diagnoses are duly... They're duly diagnosed or co-occurring, which is now is labeled as primarily means that they may be presenting with mental health issues and/or substance abuse issues. Based on those information that we get, these people are triaged accordingly to those needs. We take in consideration the services that they are requesting, but we also have to make a recommendation that is a sound and good practice based on DBHS policies. Some of the services that are rendered at DBHS include individual, families, group, children's services, psychoeducational classes, women's services that are focusing on a lot of the women issues, and one of the programs that has been very successful with DBHS in helping those persons to become very independent in their seeking services. One of the things that you will see is talking about the medical assessment. The medical assessment is deemed in twofold. There are psychiatric services that are provided by our psychiatrists when those people who are seeking psychotropic medications to help deal with their mental health issues, but a lot of the persons who are duly diagnosed need medication in conjunction with the other modalities far as the treatment services that we provide. Once the psychiatrist, the medical doctor, is seeing them, they are also prescribed medication. But for those persons who ultimately get on the methadone treatment, a medical assessment is provided. After they pass through us, they are never admitted directly to a methadone program. That is not the process. We have had requests to what is called guest dosaging. Guest dosaging mean that another C is B, as a person is transitioning into our area, may request that a person who is receiving methadone in another city is requesting that we start immediately to give those persons methadone. That's not an option. They have to become part of our treatment. We do not support that noise-of-sound practice. Once a person is deemed appropriate to receive methadone treatment, the first start is that they have already been seen in individual to determine at this point that they're ready to receive this level of care. Methadone treatment is an alternative form of treatment. It is not treatment in itself. We approach it, it is part. It is not just a standalone service, and it never will be at DBHS because it is not beneficial to the consumer just to come in, receive a dosage, and be on his way. It has to be integrated, it has to be treatment-focused, and it has to be compliant in order for them to maintain, once it has been identified that they do meet the criteria and is currently on methadone treatment. The way that this is determined initially is that a medical evaluation is done to determine if, in fact, they're appropriate. A person can't just automatically warn it. Medically, there may be reasons that warrant that they are not appropriate to receive methadone treatment. Additionally, they may not be ready for this level of care, primarily because they're presenting with other issues that would hinder them from taking this as an alternative that would lessen their desire for it to continue with their addictive drugs that they have taken, those opiate drugs like heroin. Once they... It has been determined the medical... They are appropriate at this time. They have been receiving or working through some of those additional issues. It may be determined at that time that they're ready to receive methadone treatment. They are then seen by our medical doctors. As I said, they will continue to receive individual and now group therapy. Once they're started to dispensing the methadone treatment, they are randomly drug-screened at any given period of time to determine if, in fact, there's a level of compliance with the methadone treatment. They will still show up in their system when they're drug-screened to determine if, in fact, there is compliance and/or if, in fact, they're continuing to use any other listed drugs. So it is very important that they are monitored very carefully, and they are participating in every other aspect of their treatment. It is an integrated approach. It is multi-level. It is not a standalone treatment, and it will not be. As you see here, it's only approximately 100 persons. Currently, it's actually 94 who is receiving methadone treatment. Less than 5% of the services that we're providing at DBHS. It is a very small percentage of people that we're receiving.
Well, before you go there, too, I want you to go back to the next slide, the previous slide. BHSS has been in that building since 1984. We've had, and you'll see this later, this type of treatment for four decades. We have an article that Roz found, September 5th, 1973, which Ted Masters, some of you may remember Ted. Ted was a teacher at Wilson High School, track coach, and then came to work for the city as the grants administrator, saying that we had the first, we, the city of Portsmouth, such treatment program in the state of Virginia. So we've had four decades worth of experience in this medicine, and it's, in fact, medicine. If you'll go to the next slide, you just don't get it like Gracie said by walking up and saying, "Give me methadone." It's a prescription, and who writes the prescription? It's only after the evaluation by the medical staff.
These are some of the state and regular oversight that is provided for this program. Be mindful of the fact that even if we wanted to, if we did not adhere to these strict, very strict guidelines, we would not be able to provide methadone at this location. It is very strict, including the space, the number of people we can see according to the population that is here enforcement. There are so many governing bodies that dictate. One of the things that we're most proud of is that with the CARF accreditation, we just got to three years, which really supports the fact that the level of services that we're being provided at DBHS.
This is the article that John referenced from 1973, indicating how long we've had a methadone program in Portsmouth. We also pulled other articles relevant to the crime impact of methadone facilities in the neighborhoods.
Do you want it? I'll give it to you.
Now, there...
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
How many people do you see at one time? And what's the guidelines or regulations?
For all the services?
No, just for the methadone. Yeah.
Just to see at one time?
Yeah, I mean, let's say it's 7 o'clock, you get to see five people or 10 people, or all 100 of them can come there to get treatment.
Oh, no, they're scheduled accordingly. It's in conjunction with their other treatment. Let's say, for an example, there's a process with regards to methadone treatment. There are some people who have to come in on a day-to-day basis. There are other people who have to take on medication. So therefore, if they're coming in, there are certain days that there's dispensed, there are certain hours that the medication is dispensed, and then there are other times that people, after they finish their individual sessions, they will go up and get dispensed.
What's your highest volume? I mean, in the morning, evening, or how many you have? You know, if it's five people in the morning or 10 people at lunch?
Well, the dispensing hours are from 8... 6 o'clock to 11 o'clock on Mondays through Fridays until 11:30 on Saturday and Sunday.
All right.
And so it varies, but in light of the fact that we only see in 94 persons, you're going to have, and dispensing the medication only is... Only takes minutes.
Right.
So you could have 10 persons that... But they're coming in and out and going very quickly.
So you're not like having a line of 194 people?
Oh, absolutely not.
It's not like the red line.
The only reason I'm saying that is because we had some people coming up and said, "Oh, there's going to be lines out the door, they're going to be leaving."
Oh, no, no, no. We're only currently serving 94 persons, so if you take 94, which is less than 5%, you can... You could possibly administer the meth, the meth alone in men... Well, probably in about an hour, but they're dispersed throughout the day because they have to do their paperwork in conjunction with.
In an hour, let's say in an hour, how many people would you normally see? Five?
Five, six.
Okay.
Because you can come in for other appointments.
They're coming, they're coming for other appointments. So in the days that they're administering, if the hours are so that we can accommodate those persons, a lot of the people on methadone are working.
Yeah.
So they're coming in, they get their meth, they leave.
Right.
You know, so the dispersing of the methadone takes absolutely no time.
I'm just trying to get you to let everybody know on TV land and here that the description we had the last two sessions is going...
Oh, I got you, right.
So people are inside, they're not milling around the facility, waiting outside?
And remember, Sunday morning, I mean, when do church services take place? They take place when we're open to dispense, and you see how close two churches are, one across the street and one across the street.
That's right.
One across High Street, one across Washington Street. You can't get any closer than that. Yes, sir.
Might be a good idea for some council persons to go by and look and watch and see how things are handled. Things that'll give you a good perception is how well it's handled. I've done that, so I've seen how well this is handled.
It's a very quick process.
They dispense not only this prescription drug, but there are other drugs that can be dispensed by the doctor.
And methadone, that's just a part of what you're all about, a small part of what you're all about.
Less than 5%.
But you've heard that methadone brings crime, and let's go back to a methadone clinic. Here are two articles. One relates to Virginia that includes us, 2003, and then the 2013 study that was done by the University of Maryland, which you have in your reference book, that said it's more likely to be mugged in a parking lot for a convenience store than at a methadone clinic. Now, Chief, you did not know this, but I met with four very senior officers today, not about this subject, but I used the opportunity to ask them, and when I talk about senior, here's one officer that's 10 months away from retirement, and I asked them, "Think back," and this is anecdotal, "Can you think of any crime that occurred that you can tie back to this methadone clinic?" And one of the officers said, "Absolutely not." And think about it yourself. Can you... You have different spans of history in this room. Can you think of any crime that's taken place that we can tie back to this methadone clinic? Nobody can think of one. So let's go to why move? Why do we want to get out of this building? Well, first...
You ever been inside of it?
First, we rent the facility. We pay $294,000 a year roughly for this building and for the building that has the rectors. So that's one motivation. Yeah, we'll have debt service, but all we have with this rent for the last... Since 1984, receipts. We don't have any ownership in this building. We don't own brick one in that building. From day one, we'll own the building that we're moving into, but why move? So I asked our building official and the fire marshal to go through the building and tell us, "Remember, it's an 85-year-old building, and you know that many things that we do are grandfathered, they're grandfathered back to what the rules were when the building was constructed." And it's safe to say that this building doesn't meet today's code. If you were to build a new building, it has different life safety codes. So it meets the code that was in effect long ago, and they're going to tell you about the building.
Just before disclosure, you know, I've been in the building, it does leave a lot to be desired.
A whole lot.
But just before disclosure, also, I did talk to the proprietor of that building, said, "Hey," and he wanted to let me know that if we were willing to stay, he'd be willing to fix it up. So just so everybody has that. The manager knows this. We've had that conversation.
And we've had that conversation internally after you told me that. Think about, when you see this building, gee, what will it take to fix this floor? Well, it's going to take getting everybody out off of that floor, so it's going to move them out to some swing space so that you've got an empty floor that you can do the work. So it's not going to be an easy thing, and at the end of the day, you've spent a lot of money. It still probably would not meet the current code if you're building a new building, and you don't own it.
Are there code violations?
He's going to tell you.
We're going to tell you. The building official's office, Department of San Inspections, did a... Partnered with the fire marshal's office to do an inspection back last Wednesday, the 4th. The building itself is about 80 years old. It is seven stories tall, primarily non-combustible. The configuration of the building is such that it has a central stair tower that runs up through the building, and that's adjacent to an elevator bank that's right next to it. The secondary means of egress is by way of an exterior fire escape slash exterior stairway that's located, as you can see, on the eastern portion of the building, and that runs the full height up to the seventh floor. The elevator equipment room, heating and air-conditioning equipment is all located on that penthouse up on the roof of the building. It's evident that, as we went through the building and did our inspections, really evident that there's been a number of alterations that have been conducted in there, and some repairs, and building components are... Have been changed out over the course of the last 80 years.
Hit the arrow button, Doug.
The building itself has limited fire safety... Fire safety measures included in its construction. There is no sprinkler system. There's no central fire alarm system in the building. There are some scattered battery-powered smoke detectors on each floor and in some of the offices, but that requires annual maintenance to keep them operational.
Okay, I can't make that up, because you're a fire marshal for the city. But for the most part, this is a very old, old building. It was built over 80 years ago. The way the codes work, the building code says how a building is supposed to be constructed at the time of construction. The fire code is the maintenance code. So for the most part, this building is inherently safe, as the way it was built. The best way I can describe it is that building is... This building, the building official said there is no sprinkler system that we have in this building. There's no centralized alarm system. So if something were to happen on a subsequent floor, there's no communication between floors to let occupants know that they might need to evacuate the building. With that being said, the fire protection system in place is what you see here. This is a hope... Originally was for a hose reel. The hoses are no longer required, therefore, the piping is capped off. We consider this a stand pipe, which we do use in firefight operations. There is an extinguisher in place for initial putting the fire out with people that are occupying the building. This stand pipe cabinet is located in the main hallway of the corridor. In today's standards, this stand pipe is in this building will be located in the stairwell, which is built to a higher fire protection rating, which also benefits firefighters and their firefighter safety. For us to go into operation with this at the time it was built, we would actually probably have to venture into the floor where the smoke is in order to use the stand pipe connection.
Does everybody pick that up? You know, if you're building a new building today, you'd put... If you had a stand pipe, you put it inside the stairwell. Look at the new apartments being built by Dan Aston on London, and what's coming out around is the stairwell. And what is it made out of? It's made out of cinder block. Why? Because it needs to be fireproof.
And the reason for that is, once you're in the stairwell, you're considered to be in the exit, and it's protected. You're in a protected environment until you get to the public way.
The building's on fire, and where do you go for water? You go to the floor in this building. You don't go into the stairwell. And by the way, this building has been on fire, 1993.
1993.
April 23rd, 1993, there was a fire in this building.
And with that being said, when our mode of operation for that fire in '93, we did use the fire... Exterior stairwell fire escape for firefight operations. For the most part, if we can't use this stand pipe, we would have to use a ladder truck and use a stand pipe that is on the ladder truck and put that up to a hydrant to do firefight operations exterior, going into the building from an exterior point rather than the stairwell.
You mentioned the fire escape. One of the things that you want in a fire escape is that you want to be able to step from the building to the fire escape. This fire escape, because it was built, and you saw it on the south end of the building, 80 years ago, when people were not concerned about ADA, you've got to step up over to get the...
Really?
ago, when people were not concerned about ADA, you've got to step up over to get to the fire escape. Now, you stepped on the fire escape. You didn't fall through, so we're not saying it's not sturdy, but it's a challenge. Think about the building on fire, and people are anxious to get out of that building. The last thing you need is some type of impediment that you've got to climb over to get out of the building.
And there are some impediments. Not only that, at the time this building was built, the fire escape is, Doug mentioned is on the east side of the building. This is actually one of the pathways to the fire escape from the main hallway. The best way I can describe this fire escape is you have to go through an office space to access this fire escape. If you look at this doorway, you have something that's going to impede your direct access, but that's the way the building was designed. The best comparison I can give you is Dinwiddie Hotel. That fire escape, which still exists, is actually on a common hallway, so anybody exiting their rooms can go into the hallway and exit that exterior stairwell or fire escape if they have to, unlike this building where the primary means of egress would be the central stairway, because obviously, in the event of a fire, we would not want to use the elevator, because you don't want the elevator opening up on the fire floor.
And this illustrates one of our primary concerns, is that in order to get to the fire escape, you have to go through multiple locked doors. And for all intents and purposes, that renders the secondary means of egress null and void. So, the majority of the occupants of the building only have a central stairway that runs up through the building. So, that's a real concern for us.
Something else we found in our inspection is, this is on one of the floors, this is a window hallway, which it's not rated. This window should be wired glass, which does present a hazard to firefighting operations. If we were coming here and the window was compromised and firefighters were walking around in a smoke-filled environment. Also, we found from our inspection that the existing hallways, there were transoms above all of the office spaces, which was acceptable at the time of construction, which nowadays would not be acceptable construction. This was the exit doorway on the first floor. We did find violations here that are being addressed and corrected. The door was unlocked at the time of our inspection, but again, model cases have been made over the years. And with the code, some of these mechanisms that you see in place wouldn't be allowed, but we also have to be concerned to security issues for the residents of the hallway.
The violation, the violations here, you can see there's a lock and a hasp here that keeps the thing closed, so if you don't have the key, now, obviously, that's a problem. There's also, right here, where you just throw a bar across the door.
Top and bottom.
Yeah, exactly.
It's a bit of a issue.
Same in the vicinity.
And the most acceptable doorway would be a doorway, a door that would open outward with an emergency push bar, so it wouldn't require any special knowledge as far as exiting. And if you have security issues, it would sound alarming if somebody was trying to enter through that door from that exterior.
Will the, will the next tenant, after the city vacates this building, will the current owner have to bring this up to code?
Not necessarily. The thing that has, a couple of things happened with that. First of all, there's a maintenance code that only requires issues like this to be taken care of. We're going to go into this in a minute. Other things, like the locked exit door that you saw on the previous slide, right there, that's a, that's a code violation that can be addressed now. For the most part, there's nothing that would trigger having to do anything in the building. Okay?
But I would-
We're not, we're not going to say that the building is unsafe. We're going to say-
But I will say that he indicated to me that if the city moved out, he was going to gut the building and possibly put-
Well, we, there's some issues we need to address here. We didn't, when we did the inspection, we didn't do laboratory testing of the paint to see if it's lead-based paint. We didn't check the plaster to see if it's contained asbestos, and we didn't check the mold-like substances to see if it was actually mold. All those things were present. As you can see-
My mind is just thinking out loud, but yet there are children and their parents that are accessible throughout that building.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and all of these hazards didn't just come about.
Correct.
They, they've been there. So, we talk in terms of health inspections and being sure that the public who's in and out of these buildings are also safe. How did we get to this point without some of these things being corrected? I mean, it, you know, it's just like in a school building, where we notice that the paints are peeled and there are many toxins that are in the air and in atmosphere. This is embarrassing.
You're absolutely correct.
For the city to look like that.
Why did we keep renewing the lease if the building was in such bad shape?
We've been building this since 2001.
And you'll see this, we've had this on the drawing boards for the last 13 years to get out of this building, since the year 2000. We bought the land in 2001, so it's been a goal of this city, this city council, to get out of the building. It's been slow. In fact, I got tickled because you all chatted me back in April, remember? Why's it taking so long?
It makes-
Why don't you put this with this building? Let's get on with it, John.
This was on the drawing board when I was first on the planning commission, and Bob Baldwin was the planning director. So, we've come, we've come full circle.
Well, you know, the thing and the fact that we certainly need to vacate this building and go to a new facility is, I think, something we're all in agreement with, but it appears, and as Councilwoman Randall just said, these conditions didn't happen overnight.
That's right.
So, it appears that we're making a case for the new building-
Right.
-by showing stuff that's been there for years.
Well, we're making a case to get out of the building and get out as quickly as possible. That's the case we're making.
I know, but these, these things, this is not a new revelation here. This building's been like this for a long time.
Amen.
This is a picture of the deteriorated plaster, and there's a great deal of it throughout the, throughout the facility. This plaster on the wall is so deteriorated that just by rubbing your finger on it, it turns to dust. And plaster of this age, it's in that friable condition, I would not be surprised if it was, it contained asbestos.
That's right.
Again, peel and paint, that's located in the stairway, and a lot of these are, show evidence of leaks, which can lead to this. The unintended introduction of moisture into a building can lead to old problems.
And we have no leverage to force these things to be corrected, whether it's, obviously, we're, we're a tenant in this building, but there'll be other people in this building, and for us to be showing these things that mold and perhaps asbestos?
It's significant.
You mean, in our codes, we don't have any leverage to-
Mold is, there's nothing in the building code that talks about mold. Nothing in the maintenance code that talks about mold. There is issues of asbestos that talk about asbestos, but we only have leverage on them when a, when there is an alteration done to the building that triggers that.
Is that in our code, that there's nothing about mold, or in the universal code?
In the Uniform Statewide Building Code.
All right, let's go.
Now, some of the electrical problems that we noticed in the building, this is an electrical panel that has some knockouts missing. As you can see in this picture, there are live electrical parts there. The door to the panel is open. It was closed, but this is one of the things we discovered. We also saw some of this equipment that had live electrical wires. It shouldn't be open like this. Now, I will say that issues like this are not accessible to the general public. This was located in the equipment building, up on the penthouse.
All right, so that's, that's the reason why we want to get out of the building as quickly as we can. And let's talk about the site of the new building. We did the same thing. We drew the same circle. And to give you orientation, this is County Street, that's High, that's King Street, that's High Street. This is the site. This is the Social Services Building. This is the PBH Building. Number five is the Norcom High School. If you remember, the Sears Building used to sit right here on this parking lot, right across the street from Harry Hunt Junior High School.
That's right.
And Social Services actually moved in that building and was a tenant there along with units from the police department until it flooded out. The building was pretty shoddy, and the city then contracted with the current owner of the building to lease purchase this. Now, lease purchase of buildings for Social Services is not an unusual thing. In fact, when I was with the City of Suffolk back in 1976 as Assistant City Manager, we constructed a new building in which the major tenant was Social Services. They paid the city rent. In that case, we owned the building from the start. So, the rent here is being paid for by essentially the state. Brandon, will you go over the neighborhood?
Sure. Actually, the next thing we wanted to show you was, again, the timeline that this has been in consideration at this site. And this, actually, this timeline was one of the first things I presented to you when I first came on as Deputy City Manager in October of '09. And the highlights are that it really goes back to 2001, when the city bought the property at Yorktown and County and King specifically for the purposes of the BHS Building. And then, over time, in '04, we issued the first tranche of debt for that. And, well, you see the stars on the, on the timeline indicate the number of times that we've had a public hearing about the budget and the CIP, and the BHS Building has been included in the CIP. The period of time that there was not, the CIP, the BHS Building was not considered in the CIP was a period of time that we looked at pursuing it as a PPAA proposal. And, and we ended that in 2012 and went back to the traditional bid process for developing the project. So, you can see, it goes back from really 13 years that we've looked at putting the building on the site. And, and this is the neighborhood around the proposed site. This is looking, going east on County. You've got the DSS Building in the background, and the building would be on this site here. These are the houses on County Street, just to the west of the proposed site.
Are all of those houses currently occupied?
Fred?
Most of them are.
This would look like it's boarded up.
One boarded up. Most of them are.
If you come, if you come down Yorktown Avenue, this is where Yorktown and County T, and if you're looking to your right, this is what you see. This house right here looks to be vacant. This one has a "for rent" sign. And so, we only picked up, this is, this street then goes to Captain Earl's salvage yard back here in the back, and then over here on the left, which we don't have any, we have a series of vacant-looking, one-story commercial buildings.
Thanks, Ms. Rowe. We've found that there are a number of vacant structures. The one that you see boarded up has been condemned by the inspection staff. There's a property actually on Jamestown.
Yeah, that corner.
At that corner. That is to be torn down next week. We've gone through the process with the advertising, the notifications, walked through the property with police and the contractor last week with demolition. Expected to be Monday, Tuesday rain as we move ahead. We've also noticed throughout the area, there are a number of apartments that are vacant. One of the things that we did notice as well is that there are a number of hiding spots, a number of alleys and little lanes that are through there where it's gotten overgrown. We are in the process now of removing the hiding spots so that the activity the two ladies were speaking of at the last meetings, we're trying to look at that as being an issue with the combination of the inspectors and the police department to remove that element from the neighborhood. As you walk through an alley that's got overgrown bushes, actually, as we did it, three people walked out from behind the bushes and left. So, it's, you know, it's, it's there. It's existing. We're moving ahead. There's a vacant lot right beside 600 Yorktown, but it's vacant, but it has a lot of hiding spots because the shrubbery has grown up and it creates a place where people can, can hide. So, we've looked at, and actually, today, with assistance from a number of different agencies, from Oasis down, actions being taken to eliminate those.
Ms. Rowe, is there a question, please?
One of the things that community has gone through quite a bit of transition-
Yes, ma'am.
-all the way through. And at the time, when those homes were vacated, many people who were from areas that had been torn down moved into some of those original houses that were down there. I'm a young lady, but I remember it, all the way down through there. And at that time, it was a very quiet neighborhood, because many of the people invested in those homes are now seniors, and that's why we're seeing them like they are at this point here. If we don't be careful with what we are doing in setting up these clinics, it's like sitting up, setting up a section in the city for the individuals who need the help, who are on the methadones and some of the other things. It's not doing anything but creating another nest in a section. Look like we need to really explore that a little bit closer, else we aren't doing anything but shifting what was spread out in some of the other sections. I guess I'm an old lady and been around so long, I watch what has happened, and you're going to create something else, because, man, this is right there close proximity to the high school. I see Norcom High School, your social services and behavioral healthcare. I'm, I'm just looking at the whole picture, and what I'm looking at, I think it's too close in proximity to what is school here and your outreach services. I have a concern with it.
Well, remember, it's the distance between this site and, and Norcom's 490 feet. It existed for almost two decades closer to Portsmouth Catholic School. There's a daycare right behind it.
Yes, it is.
What I was trying to tell you in the first part of this presentation is that this department does not bring criminal activity. This department does not bring down the neighborhood.
But it brings additional traffic and through foot traffic.
Yes, ma'am.
And that is a deterrent to those older neighbors that are residing around the area. That's the thing I'm thinking about.
Well, let's look at this. This building was built this century.
Right.
As soon as this building started out, the city bought the site here-
Right.
-to put BHS, because the idea was to put those services together. You've got the Health Department on this side. You've got Social Services. Then you'll have Behavioral Healthcare Service that also sees patients, and some of their patients might be patients of the Health Department or of Social Services. So, having a one-stop place makes a lot of sense.
No, it doesn't.
Then, then you also have Portsmouth Volunteers for the Homeless in '08- Then you also have Portsmouth Volunteers for the Homeless in Oasis here. And I can tell you, as serving for three years as PBH as President and more than eight years on the Board, that 85% of our homeless brothers and sisters have some type of substance
Abuse.
Abuse or addiction.
That's right.
And so I think that you all, and I attended the Planning Commission meetings for this building as the President, because it had to go before the Planning Commission. In fact, this land had to be replanted because it was a bunch of small lots. That required a public hearing. A street had to be closed, that required a public hearing. There are numerous public hearings that I can tell you, not one person from that community, not one, appeared before the Planning Commission to object to this type of service delivery to our brothers and sisters. Not one.
I don't have a problem with that, but I'm looking at that school, the high school, I C Norcom High School, is within walking distance of where we are talking about.
So is Court Street Academy.
Well, that was then, but we're looking at making a change. That is my perception.
I appreciate that.
All right.
This is looking across the proposed site towards Yorktown Avenue, and I believe this is the house that Fred mentioned is due for demolition on the corner of County.
No, that's not that one.
It's the next block over.
Oh, excuse me.
Those are the four houses on Yorktown. And the ownership, we went back and looked at the ownership. One of the things that you were charged with by the citizens that came is that this has been a secret. Well, you've seen that there was a series of public hearings, starting back early this century. When you have a public hearing, I invite you to look at your CIP and your budget. The page that has got the Behavioral Healthcare has a little map that shows the location, so that the person is not lost in where this building is proposed. But for the most part, most of these houses were purchased after we purchased our lot, after we purchased our lot.
This shows the relationship of the existing DSS Building on the County Street frontage. And here is the Oasis and PBH Building back off of County Street on Williamsburg Avenue. Okay. This brings us to the project status portion of the presentation. And as John mentioned at the beginning, we're at the point where we're ready to open bids as a result of completing the design phase and soliciting bids. We've had 12 contractors that have expressed interest by attending one of the two mandatory pre-bid meetings. And we think it's important to point out, every time you engage in a bid solicitation process of a project of this scope, if you don't follow through with it, you lose credibility as the entity that's soliciting the bids. And so there's a cost in not completing that process as a city. And there's also a cost to the contractors. Every time they put together a bid packet, especially for one for this size, we estimate they have $7,000 worth of time and materials invested in putting together the bid packet. We mentioned previously about a waiting area for the existing space. Councilman Meeks, this is the first floor plan, and you can see it's got the main entrance. This would be King Street up here, County Street along the bottom, Yorktown on this side. So there's a central lobby and stairwell and a central intake waiting space on the first floor. Altogether, this building is 31,000 square feet, and it includes, you know, clinical, medical facilities, central intake, medical records management. Over on the right corner, we've got psychological assessment space for family and children. And then on the second floor, this is really to illustrate the proportion of the entire building that's dedicated to methadone dispensing. And this area right here, the methadone waiting area, which has its own waiting space, the dispensary area and the pharmacy comprises 864 square feet, which out of the entire building is less than 3%.
Brandon, answer. Where would the people enter the building seeking methadone?
The main entry to the building would be on the King Street face, so come in on the second floor. Either take the elevator or stairs up, oops, enter the first floor there, take the elevator or stairs up to the second floor, and then come to this methadone waiting area.
Have an exit, they would leave the same way.
Same way. Yes, sir.
There was no entrance or exit on Yorktown?
And think back to the current location. This is Yorktown over here, this is County. There are no residential structures on the, behind this building at all. But in the current location, we have a residential structure within 10 feet of the existing building. And behind the building, you've got another structure. And then interspersed throughout the whole area are two civic leagues. You've got the Old Town Civic League, you've got the Old Town South Civic League. You've got five times many people living in the current location than you have in this location. Five times. You've got more businesses, more restaurants at the current location. And it has not yet brought down the neighborhood, nor has it brought down the business, nor has it kept people from going to restaurants or to churches.
This is the elevation drawing that just illustrates what the front of the building looks like on the King Street side.
Yes, I've read through this thoroughly. I stayed up late looking at it, and it seems like this project has been thoroughly thought of and gone through several councils. And to me, it appears that we're spinning wheels over things that had been looked at before. And from what I can see from the floor plan of the building and where it will be, I don't see how it would hinder anything. It looked to me as though it would complement. And I think that Behavioral Healthcare Services, they're overdue in going into a facility that would be more than adequate to handle the type of patients that they're handling for safety-wise, and also that security will be in that building too, I'm sure.
Yes, sir.
As it is in the current building.
Yes, sir.
And so there's nobody just going to be wandering around or doing anything that seems suspicious without security having to be acknowledged of it. Really, it looks as though it's a moot issue, as far as I'm concerned. I think we ought to go with it. The sooner the better. We're wasting time.
Mr. Meeks, Ms. Randall.
Okay.
I concur with everything he says.
I understand exactly everything that he says, and I agree with many points of it. The thing is, I think there's always an avenue when you're talking about dealing with people, in particular, young generations in a high school, in an area like that. There are more things than just looking at the big picture. We need to look at the impact it's going to have on the lives of those that are definitely going to be impacted by. You cannot make that much of a change unless you're a magician and can pop your fingers and it changes. And it not impact the people who are going to be affected by the changes that are around them. I'm sure that even some of the faith-based ministry thing who are with their clientele, they came to us, the citizens in council meeting, and voiced their concerns. And I think that before we just automatically say, "This is it," many of those people have been around there for a long time. And it's not going to be easy for them to adjust to uprooting. Young people, we can do it. And I'm concerned myself as young, I want you to notice that. We can be versatile enough to do it. But many of these senior citizens are not going to be able to just uproot and shift out because of the shifting of the paradigm of what they have been used to. So I think we need to be understanding, at least let the people have a voice in terms of what it is that we are going to do in uprooting. Have you been to the civic leagues and explained it to the civic leagues? Many of them will be seeing this for the first time when it comes on TV. And I just want to make sure the seniors who have invested in our city have a fair chance to make a joyful noise about what they want their retiring environment to look like. And that's all I have to say, because you're going to do, you know, majority rule. But I will be making a joyful noise.
The only thing I would say, I think we've certainly heard from some residents there, seems to me that the problems that were cited are problems that pre-exist. Obviously, the clinic's not there now.
That's right.
And I think those problems can be, and I think are being addressed by the beeped-up patrol presence from the police officers. So I go along with my colleagues. I think this project has certainly been on the drawing boards for, gee, eight years or longer.
13.
13 years.
13 years.
It's been long, yeah, it's been at least 13.
So it's certainly no surprise to anyone. I think it's been more vetted than probably any project that we've had. So I'm on board with my colleagues.
Mr. Rowe, are you looking for...
Yes, sir.
...for us to have a consensus? So I tell you what, let him get through his last few slides, and then we'll see if we have a consensus.
We just want to tell you where we are. Again, bids are due on the 17th. Design is right, yeah. So the construction documents are complete, the contractors have them. We know that 12 contractors are interested in the project, which is a good thing, because that means that we'll hopefully get some good bids. And here's the funding status for the project. Just to recap, the two neighborhoods, side by side, not to go over that again. But the last slide is that there's no criminal activity that one can think of associated with a medical facility that we've had for four decades, four decades in prison. It exists, the current one, near businesses, schools, neighborhoods, without any negative impact. We've been planning for this. You bought the property in 2001, but your planning actually goes a little bit before that. And, yeah, we want to get out of that building, get out of it quick. And so we saw this as a major milestone briefing, because if you don't want to proceed on this project, you need to tell us now, so we can put the word out, don't put your bids in. Our recommendation is that you continue. And I'd like to see if that's a consensus of council.
I move that we continue with it.
Ms. 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 Ms.